Good evening, welcome to tonight's work session. I just want to make a note that we met in executive session, I think it was from 6:00 to 7:30 to discuss matters of personnel. Okay, moving on then to the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh wait, we do have a show tonight, right? Okay, we do have a show, so I'm not sure.
The show has not.
No, we do not have a show tonight.
Alright.
Okay, so.
So we rise for the post.
Yes.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on then to the audience of citizens. I'd just like to make an announcement that this meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment?
Good evening. I'd like to formally introduce myself. My name is Anwar Muhammad. I'm a resident, address 317 West Main Street, Lansdale.
Mr. Muhammad, can you just write that down on, is there a paper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Like I said, I would like to formally introduce myself. My name is Anwar Muhammad, parent in the district, business owner, owner of the Black Reserve Bookstore, and coordinator of the community forums that we've been having in the area concerning racism and diversity. I'm here tonight hopefully to put a face to the email or email that I sent to the board members and the superintendent and vice or assistant superintendent. I wanted to briefly go over or make comments about how the actual document got put together, who put it together, and the reasoning behind it being put together. The community forums were put together to discuss various issues in the area with concerning race and diversity or lack thereof. In the last, I want to say, three meetings, community members and students in particular were speaking out in reference to the discrepancy in a variety of things that they felt were issue for their success as students inside the North Penn School District. The actual students and community are the ones who compiled the document, I'm just a messenger. So, the educational equity within the North Penn School District, bullet points real quick if you didn't get a chance to view the document, whereas we, the diverse student allies and concerned community members of North Penn School District, recognize that the district serves as a microcosm of the greater community and that issues of discrimination and unconscious bias are therefore seen in the district at all levels. We establish the following goals for North Penn School District. Whereas we believe that the demographic and professional staff should represent the population it serves, we establish the following goals addressing hiring practices at North Penn School District. Establish a recruitment plan to expand diversity, establish the 15% to 20% of new professional full-time hires, focus on efforts at substitute teacher fair to hire black substitute teachers and other substitute teachers of color, refer to the substitute teacher pool to give performance on black substitute teachers and other substitute teachers of color. District Human Resources should work on recruitment, on a recruitment plan so that the teachers and administration of any individual school represent the population it serves, review teacher exit interviews to determine the reason for leaving, examine the staff evaluation process to identify staff members who may exceed, who may need additional training on bias by the 2019, 2020 school year. Whereas we believe that any initiative involving cultural competency and inclusion in the district needs to be deliberate and establish accountability procedures. We establish a diversity mission statement to each school in the district. The diversity mission statement will be treated as a living document, hold at least one district-wide panel discussion on race and diversity in the North Penn School District, review procedure for logging a complaint, develop a mediation and reconciliation panel, train teachers and staff members on trauma-inforced practices, establish trauma-informed practice to and with the benefit of all students. Recognize that research shows that black students and other students of color are disciplined at a higher rate to ensure more severe penalties than other, than their white counterparts. We establish that North Penn School District cannot address the problem without recognizing the extent of the problem, so conduct a school-by-school study, complete the discipline study, depend on the results of the study, establish guidelines using trauma-inforced practices. And finally, whereas upon feedback from black students and other students of color in the district, we recognize that these students do not feel that their academic or extracurricular opportunities are as equal or encouraged as their counterparts. We establish the following goals. Establish a will of experience, review methods by which teachers recommend students for honor and AP classes. Like I said, real brief synopsis of the document. I look forward to working with North Penn School District and people I spoke with so far on getting these needs met for the black students and students of color who, like I said, who took the initiative and actually compiled this document. So with that being said, thank you. Like I said, I look forward to meeting with and speaking with you, you all, and moving forward with this. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad.
Thank you.
And thank you for your email.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? And you are.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Susan Leonard. I live at 309 Upper Valley Road in North Wales. I was just looking at the agenda, so I wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak after the presentation or.
You may do both now.
Okay, so, well first I want to thank everybody for bringing from ECP the presentation for all-day kindergarten. A great jurist once said that lasting change and enduring change happens one step at a time. So I'm hoping that after the presentation that this board will vote 9-0 to bring this to action, since we've been having this discussion about all-day kindergarten for several years now. And I know Mrs. Prokowsky's shaking her head, so eight to one would be okay too. But, you know, that was, that was one of the comments when I was sitting there about how it was always 9-0, always 9-0, always 9-0. And I thought, well, if we're talking about what's good for the school district, then most of the time it should be 9-0. So I appreciate you listening to the presentation. I've heard it, you've heard it, and hopefully it will move along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard. Anyone else want to make public comment? If not, then we'll move on to new business.
Thank you. We do have one action item for this evening. It is personnel, and I do recommend the approval of the personnel items as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we do have one work session item, and this is informational. We would like to do the presentation on full-day kindergarten, and this does come from the ECP committee. And leaving that presentation this evening, we have Dr. Santoro, our Director of Elementary Education, and Dr. Ruffo, our, one of our assistant superintendents. Give Betty a chance to switch seats here and get up here and.
Table's getting a little crowded.
Yeah, it is. Alright, take it away.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Alright, so many of you have seen this presentation before. We're going to go into a little bit greater detail in terms of what the budgeting looks like, but I'm going to let Dr. Santoro lead this, as she has been doing the groundwork over the last several years.
Okay. Oh, it didn't move. Let's try this again.
Can I take credit for that?
Terry, just hold your hands up if you guys want to.
Alright, here we go.
And now moved.
Okay, so I always like to start with the why. So just reiterating the why for full-day kindergarten, and, you know, looking at the list, it's not really in any order, but we all know the shift in our PA court standards over the past seven, eight years, which increases the, what children have to know and be able to do by the end of kindergarten. So that is one of the reasons why we are recommending full-day kindergarten. And also it's rigorous academics. I have some slides in here that will show you the changes in the core standards 10 years ago to what we are doing in kindergarten now. Also the need to develop social skills. We really believe that it's important beginning in kindergarten that we provide that balance of academics and social skills for our children, so that we can really, you know, teach them with the skills that they need to get along with each other, how to work with their peers, how to collaborate. And then also looking at building relationships with their peers. And then the one that's really highlighted there in the, you know, in the bold, is our goal, we really want all of our students to be able to be proficient by the, by third grade in reading. And right now our data is not providing that, we are not reaching that at this point. So that really is a big push for us, that we would let all of our students be reading at a proficient level. Because we do find there's enough research behind that, that children, the gaps will continue to grow as the kids get into the intermediate grades. So just, you know, the need for change, the student achievement, the need for greater proficiency. Also, we have students that are coming to us with a lack of preschool experience. Our average overall for all 13 elementary schools, when I look at the average, it's about 80% of our kids come to school with preschool experience. However, in some of our schools, we have students where it's only about 40% or 50%. So that is really another reason why we feel that the full-day model would really support all of our students. And then once again, that increase in rigor. So this is a chart, I'm not going to read it to you, but I went back to 2007, and it just shows you what our math skills were like in 2007 compared to what kids are expected to do in math in kindergarten now. So if you look to the left-hand side, and if you look under numbers and operations, you can see the kids are just counting. There's a lot of road activities that children were expected to do. But when you look to the right-hand side and you look at some of the verbs there that children are now applying, they're describing, they're analyzing. So that's also the big shift that we have in kindergarten, that all of our kids are expected to know and be able to do this by the end of that year. And the same in reading. When you look at some of the skills that students were expected to do in 2007 compared to today, it's really increased. Once again, just looking at those verbs, describing, acquiring, applying, demonstrating. This is a piece of information that we wanted to share with you. When we look at our data, the dark blue line shows the beginning-of-year data, when students come into kindergarten and they take the DIBELS, which is a reading assessment that we give. And you can see that back in 1314, we had 77, almost 78% of our students coming in proficient as their baseline. But then by the end of the year, we dropped down to 66%. And that's questioned, well, with a full year of instruction, why aren't we seeing an increase? So that graph pretty much speaks for itself, that as you look to 2017, 2018, we have, it's declining the amount of kids that are coming in with those skills, those readiness skills to really begin kindergarten.
Right, and just to clarify, so what this graph is showing you is that the students coming in back in 2013, 2014, we had close to 80% who were already, you know, at where they needed to be. Now, this is the beginning-of-year information, we only have about 66%.
Right.
So it's not necessarily that they declined over ti, over the year, but what they're coming in to us with is less.
This is just representation of the full-day kindergarten by district types throughout the state. So you can see all the charter schools have full-day kindergarten, you look at suburban schools, and you look at urban schools. So that's just really a nice graphic to see the balance out of the different types of districts within the state. And then we broke it down again by county. You can see the blue is highlighting for us the counties that have all-day, and then where the orange is indicating some full day, and then the gray area is indicating no full day.
And there's Montgomery County, isn't there?
So this graph speaks to the percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged. We can see back in 2010, we had about 16% of our students that were economically disadvantaged, and this is a district, this is total district. And then last year, reaching 2017 at 32.8%, and then this year for 2018 at 32%. So we can see the increase in those changes.
And we think that 32.2% is a little low right now, because we have families that are still filling out free and reduced lunch applications, so the prior data was pulled October 1st. So that's our number as of now. And it actually overall is probably an underrepresentation of what we're seeing in the district, because our kindergarten being half-day, we don't even factor those students into that count necessarily. They're not here for lunch, so we don't have free or reduced lunch information for them. So that number we would also likely see go up, just with the addition of full-day K, because now we're counting them in.
This slide just represents a potential schedule, if we had full-day K and what it could possibly look like. This is not etched in stone. This was a schedule that we put together about two years ago with our existing kindergarten committee. This would have to be revised and looked at again with our curriculum folks and our full committee again, because once again, we want to know that we have that balance of social skills and also that academic piece.
Is that the schedule that the pilot programs followed?
Their scheduling, their morning is a regular kindergarten in the morning, where they do reading and they do math, and they have a special. Then they have lunch. Then in the afternoon, it's basically doing a lot of remediation skills in the afternoon.
Okay.
So it's heavily with the academic piece. So reconvening the full-day kindergarten committee, like I said, we have an existing committee. We want to embellish that committee so that we can, you know, achieve the work that we need to get done. So we would have to add some representation to make sure that all the departments are represented, because this is a huge task that we're taking on. So having facilities involved, curriculum, special education, the ELL folks in that department, they would be supporting us as well to be part of that committee, plus adding some counselors and psychologists. And so a nice representation to really, you know, flesh out what we already have existing. Then within that work, we want to then break out into those subcommittees, because there's a lot of work that has to be done, a communication plan, the planning of the whole rollout model for full-day K, what registration will look like, when the planning for that will begin, the curriculum revisions to our existing curriculum that we have. We have plenty of curriculum, but we have a set pacing schedule that the teachers follow, so we would need to work with a team of teachers in our curriculum department to then flesh that out, what will the curriculum look like in a new framework for full-day K. And then the facilities piece, which we'll touch on in a moment or two, and then staffing. And then our intent is that monthly we would be reporting out to ECP with our progress of how we're moving forward with implementation. So last spring, we did a classroom space utilization. Mr. Kennedy and I worked with the principals, and we put together a chart that actually looked at each building and looked at the existing space they had, and then also how much space we would need in 1920 for full-day implementation. I know this chart's a little hard to read, but actually we broke it down in 1920, the amount of sections we would need, the amount of teachers we would need, and then also we looked at the buildings where we knew we would have some difficulty, because we didn't have the available space. So as of today, the two buildings where we do not have space, one being Inglewood, where we don't have any available space to house any kindergarten programs, and also NAP. We don't have any space at all at NAP. So these would be decisions that we need to think about, what are we going to do? So is it adding a modular? Is it doing some boundary realignment? You know, these are some of the decisions that we would need to make to make sure that we had the room for the students. I don't know if you wanted to add anything with that?
Okay.
Okay, alright. So this just goes through, just outlining again, you know, adjusting the pacing guidelines, looking at the curriculum development for the social and emotional learning. This year we started the second step program, K to six, so it would actually be working with the teachers on that program in kindergarten, and what that would look like, how we could fit that into their day. We need to also consider the special areas curriculum, because now students will be going from 22 minutes of a special to a full 45 minutes. So that's going to have an impact on art, music, library, and PE. So those curricular areas will need to be revised. And then the purchasing of all the student and teacher materials that we need. The other piece is professional development. We'll have to work with our teachers on professional development with the new curriculum, and then also looking at transitioning from that full-day, from a half-day schedule to a full-day schedule. Our staffing, what we would like to do is to really start working on professional development in January with our existing teachers. And then new staff, we're really working up a plan with Dr. McQ and her department on hiring of new staff, and how we can get them in in the spring to really start training And then there's just a list of some of the purchases, which will be on our budget sheet, furniture, the curriculum materials, costs for professional development, facilities, if we have to add a modular, maybe some things that we might need to do to a bathroom to make it a children's bathroom, if it's already an adult bathroom, that would be the case over at North Wales. So these are some considerations that we have. Technology is already accounted for in the budget for 1920 under Dr. Landis's budget. And then there's just a list of the staffing implications this would have. I don't know if you want to talk about transportation?
Yeah, let's talk about transportation when we get to budget. I can explain that a little more. Would you like to go to boundary realignment?
Yeah, so then the boundary realignment, the potential for Inglewood and NAP. So we would need to look at that, and what is our, you know, opportunity, what do we need to do here, what's the best plan of action, since we don't have space in those two buildings? And then we would really need to rely on our survey that we did with Montgomery County, where we have that 10-year projection survey, which we also use as a resource when we're planning out.
So this is the fun part, the budget. Alright. So I'll walk you through the budget, and what we have on the first sheet here, this is the summary sheet, and we have it broken out into what are the recurring costs versus the one-time costs. So clearly, the largest recurring cost is the staffing, which is over $3 million, and that's something that we would have to account for moving forward. And if we look at the staffing, what you're seeing here and what's reflected in the budget overall is really what we thought would be our worst-case scenario. So in looking at staffing, we looked at the addition of 27 teachers to make this happen. Now, what that factors into is if we were to go over, you know, a student or two on the class size guideline, that would tip us into another section. So that's factored in. We don't know that it will reach that, but we felt that that would be the highest estimate. For special education teachers, we looked at 16% of the student population having an IEP, so roughly 16% of that number of regular ed teachers came to three for special ed teachers. Special area, Dr. Santoro looked at the special area schedule. As she mentioned, we would need to extend that block of special area time for kindergarten, so really doubling what they're getting, which would cause an increase in teachers. ELD, we looked at the projected enrollment studies, and based on our numbers that we currently have, came up with two. Special ed assistance, we put down for four. We did get a question about this at ECP, was that high enough? And so I just want to give you some feedback in where we came up with that. Many of our special ed students who have one-to-one assistance currently, although we only have a half-day program, they are getting full-day services, because that was the level of intervention that they were receiving through the intermediate unit or something before they arrived with us. So we do already factor that in, and we also have students who are aging out of the program, so students who may be 21 that have one-to-ones, then that person becomes part of the staffing and can cycle back into kindergarten. So that was our, that's our best guess. In terms of the special education, until those students, their families sign the release, we don't know who's coming. So this is really just based on what our prior years looked like. Similar for ELD assistance. And then in looking at the cafeteria assistance, that was based on a half-hour increase, so instead of adding staff, really increasing their time. Did you want to add anything on that, Betty?
Just because we're not really adding personnel there, we're just adding another lunch period. So my estimation is that we would be, need another half hour. So that's just a calculation on, you know, we have, you know, 26 assistants throughout cafeteria aides, half-hour calculation just based off of 180 days, just for sake of really coming up with a figure.
Any questions about those numbers, estimates, before I move on?
I would just, I just would like to emphasize, this is a high estimate.
This is a high estimate, yes. And all of our estimates are. And really, we wanted to figure on what was the worst that it could be, so that there's no surprises. And you'll see too, so when we're going into curriculum, we do believe that some of the professional development, especially if we get a jump on our hiring, that we can do in this school year with some of our existing funds, our grant funds through Ready to Learn. So some of that we do anticipate would come out of here, but again, worst-case scenario. So the curriculum pieces are there.
I have one other question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed.
Special education staffing, three. Just kind of two questions. One, it sounded like you based that number off of a percentage, you know, taking what percentage of students we have now that are special education, and applying that percentage to 27. How's this going to work operationally? So there's 13 buildings.
Right.
How will that work? That's piece one. And then number two, at the kindergarten level, I imagine many students are not yet identified. Are these staff going to be specifically trained to be trying to look for the things that they should be looking for, maybe to identify students, so they get the services they need?
Both great questions. So I'll address the first question in terms of how would we split the staff. So what I would look at is, looking across the district, we have some schools that have almost one special education teacher per grade level. So in those buildings, this wouldn't necessarily be an issue. So we would look at our buildings that don't have as higher staffing ratios, and in kindergarten and first grade, we tend to not always have one teacher per grade level, because of exactly what you said. We don't have as many students who are identified, so sometimes they'll split and float between K and one. So we would target whatever the highest areas of needs are, which tend to be literacy and math, and then look at assistance support for supporting students in other special areas if they need it. And in terms of the professional development, I wouldn't see it, for identifying students, I wouldn't see it much different than what we currently do, because we deal with that as things currently stand. And Dr. Santoro, last year with the collaboration of the special ed department, we did revise our multi-tiered systems of support process, which is how we identify students. So it's very database, there's a lot of criteria. I do think we could work in some of those, that behavior piece and social, emotional to our professional development, and recognizing that, you know, these are little kids and they're five, and sometimes the acting-out behavior is because they're five, and really providing teachers with that support in terms of what's developmentally appropriate. So I think that's how we would target it.
And then also we have early intervention, that we do every year as well. Beginning in December, we have one of our special ed supervisors, she works with the IU, and they look at students who, through early intervention. So we start that process with families that are already getting services prior to kindergarten. So it varies from year to year. Some year you have 120 students that are coming in through early intervention, some years it's 80 students. And it varies by building to building. So that is always, we just have to see what that, you know, what that looks like when we talk to the IU. So that is another process that we've always had in place.
So in the curriculum piece, most of the, most of what we're buying for curriculum will be that one-time initial purchase, until then it's end of cycle. So textbooks, things of that nature, there are a number of licenses, electronic subscriptions that are on there. I won't go through it piece by piece unless you would like me to. If I scroll down, you'll see that the one-time cost is really the big piece here. So when we're buying all of the initial purchases, and then the recurring, we're estimating around $10,000 per year. And mostly those are the electronic subscriptions. Okay, so facilities, Dr. Santoro had alluded to this earlier in the presentation. Again, mostly one-time costs. We would look at modifying an existing bathrooms in, oh, and you know what, Oak Park, we can actually take out of there.
Right, Oak Park, we looked at that again, and that is already a student bathroom that's adjacent to that room.
Right, so North Wales would be about a $2,500 cost to modify an existing. Oak Park, we worked with the principal there and found another solution, so that will come off. I apologize that that's still on there. The large costs in facilities would be modulators at NAP. So installing them, and then eventually removing the lease for however long they're up. Mr. Kennedy, did you have anything to add? Did I hit that?
Those numbers were actually derived from the modular at NAP now, since those prices are based on that quote from a few years ago.
I have a question about that. So the, the cost of installing is one, but then the cost to remove is quite expensive and so.
Well, they have to.
It's almost the same, I mean, it's so close to the installation.
Yeah, they restore the site to its original condition. They'll remove the sanitary lines, the water lines, the concrete piers that they install. So they'll remove all that and restore it to a grass condition.
So really for the NAP, those modulators would be in place until the building is renovated?
Correct.
Which could be one to two years from the time we implement, possibly implement.
Possibly, correct.
Any other questions on facilities? Furniture, these numbers are based on the most recent renovation we did at elementary, which was in Montgomery. So those numbers are there. And again, this is a high estimate. Do we probably have chairs that are around that we can use? Yes, but assuming that every classroom needed to be fully outfitted, that would be the cost. We don't see it coming in that high.
Right, exactly. Because once we start to work, get down to the nitty-gritty, we know in schools we're going to have teacher furniture and we're going to have things there. That was just for purposes of, let's say, we're going to outfit all twenty-seven classrooms. But like Jenna said, that's really a high number.
I'm sorry, one more question about the modulators, going back to that. We also said that there was a space issue at Inglewood. And so are we missing the Inglewood modular costs? Or would there be another workaround for Inglewood?
One of the things that we would need to discuss that Dr. Santoro alluded to was potential boundary realignment. Because we do have space towards that end of the district at NASH. In the NAP end of the district, there's not really space there. All right, so in terms of professional development, the major costs would be training our teachers in the ELA and the math curriculum resources, which is Journeys and Go Math. And as Dr. Santoro mentioned, we are hoping to get some of that done in the spring, which would come off of this budget and some of it would come out of our Ready to Learn grant funds. And then finally, the transportation costs. This is one of the bigger question marks because what we don't know yet is whether we would need to add additional routes. So while we would be saving some costs in eliminating the midday runs, there could be potential cost incurred whether we add one, two, or three routes. So this is sort of a middle-of-the-road cost if we needed to add two additional runs. So we could bring in a max of two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-five-hundred in savings if we did not need any additional routes. But if we needed to add three, then that savings drops down to about fifty thousand. That also includes the fifteen percent reduction in subsidy that would occur. So if our transportation costs are going down, we do lose some subsidy, but these numbers reflect that.
What would the impact be on the current budget of hiring the twenty-seven teachers in the spring? What would you anticipate that to be?
I don't know.
Well, I don't think we would have, we wouldn't be paying them the full salary. So we would be hiring them and then we would be paying them some sort of stipend.
Has there been a discussion about the amount of the stipend itself?
No, no, that was just an idea that we've been just, you know, tossing around. It's not, yeah, it's not etched in stone yet. We really have to flesh that out.
Yeah, and I think that's something too, when we're doing our hiring, being very upfront about that, that, you know, here, you have an early commitment, you're making it, we're giving you an early offer here, but this is part of the deals that you need to come and, you know, we'll give you a reasonable stipend. But that would be something we'd need to work out. Okay, so those are the costs.
Can we go back to staffing, please?
We can.
On the, um, cost of salary and benefits, that's not a static cost. That's going to increase when, as time and.
That's correct.
New contracts and everything get put in. So that, that does increase somewhat every year.
It would, yeah. So based on step movement, any increases to the contract? That concludes the presentation that Dr. Santoro and I have for you. If you'd like to ask us any additional questions, we're certainly willing to entertain them at this time.
Yes, to whoever wants to answer the question, just some clarifying points and making sure, since I'm not the expert and deferring to the experts here in the room that we have. Is it true that the current, in Pennsylvania's, the Department of Education has it, that it's still a full-day curriculum? So our half-day students, one way or another, have to still complete? Could you explain that? Is my understanding correct?
So there's standards that are released for each grade. So the kindergarten standards are what the kindergarten standards are. So we address them in half a day.
So a full-day curriculum right now is, is upon our students in half-day, essentially?
And probably even a little more to the point, the first-grade curriculum reflects that students in Pennsylvania have kind of had a more robust kindergarten program because so many districts have gone to this model, that the standards themselves have started to reflect that. And that's why they have become so much more challenging. So it's a compounding problem year after year.
Thank you.
And it's been very challenging, really, because technically teachers have a two-hour day because a half-hour, that twenty minutes is for a special each day. So the teachers are really, you know, it's, it's heavy with academics because they have that full-day model.
And that's one of my other questions, and it goes back to one of the slides during your, your presentation on the potential, understanding nothing's in stone. Recession, I believe, is it twenty minutes, right? Lunch is thirty. And I know, now, I'm surprised, that's in a full day. I would still like to see more, I mean, not being an expert. But for purposeful play, right?
Correct.
Building a bond with parents and helpful.
Right.
That's something that will only, have studies shown that that will increase with full-day kindergarten? Those opportunities? Are there studies that show that reduces?
For play opportunities and social skills.
Right, just for, I'm, my assumption and what I'm wondering is if studies back this up, is that risks are reduced, reduced because of better, healthy childhood development through full-day kindergarten because of additional opportunities.
Right, that's really what the research is now showing. It's recommending that it's not all academics and heavy on the academics, but where you have the purposeful play and you have those times for kids to really collaborate and to really work more on project-based learning where it's the higher engagement. So I did caution with this slide, that was really done maybe a year and a half ago with our existing committee. This was just a potential schedule. So it's something that we really would want to embellish and work on with our curriculum folks to really, and our teachers, to really build that out. Because it's a little, it's a little heavy with the academics there. And we really want to have that nice balance.
And lastly, I just think that that fits into a more holistic approach, that at least speaking for myself personally, I have thirteen years of juvenile justice of alternative education, multi-systemic treatment. What I like about full-day kindergarten, if you look at the studies, there's one, Gibbs, in 2014, that talks about a longitudinal benefit to full-day kindergarten for all students, especially minority students. And then when you, when you couple that with the longitudinal, there's studies also that deal with the long-term health benefits, economic benefits. Then we're getting into countering adverse childhood experience at a young age. So full-day kindergarten, as if any of my colleagues can't tell, certainly is something that I would like to see in the district. But I feel that there's overwhelming amount of research that backs up this type of program and high-quality education for our district.
To build on that question, I would, because I think we are seeing so many more kids who are entering, who have been impacted by.
By adverse childhood experiences. What, what's the plan to address kind of the emotional support needs of these students? And is that reflected in the budget? Yes, and we had this discussion, actually, Dr. Santoro and I, after the last ECP meeting, because that was brought up there. We didn't feel that we needed to add any additional funds because we feel like we can move some around for that specific purpose, based on what we already have allocated and doing some of the training this year rather than next year. But that's definitely something we're looking at. It's something that we're already working on now in terms of the trauma-informed professional development through Lakeside. So that would definitely be a continued focus.
And does Lakeside have experience with their trainings and, and looking at that issue specifically of kids who maybe haven't had exposure to, you know, a daycare program who are then going into a full-day kindergarten program? And applying trauma-informed in that?
I can't speak to the specific issue of kindergarten. What I can share with you, and I can, I can research that, what I could share is that we did have a presentation with our administrative team through Lakeside where they're really on the cutting edge of the research in terms of brain development. So I would assume, yes, because so much of the trauma-informed training is based on brain development, which is just part of that natural, you know, developmental progressions that we're seeing in kindergarten. But that's definitely something that I could research and get back to you to confirm. And if it's not, then I'm sure they would work with us.
Yeah.
In terms of that emotional learning piece, I'm sorry, I was just wondering, are we fully committed to second step? Or are we going to explore some other options as well as like mindfulness and some other programs?
Well, we could, we could. And we could do that in kindergarten. We could do that, we could explore that. I just wanted to call that out because it is something that we did implement this year because we made a commitment to character education and social, emotional learning. So I think for kindergarten, we can explore that and we can.
Yeah, I definitely think it's worth our time to really dig deep and find a program that we feel is the best fit for our children.
Developmentally, yeah.
Developmentally, absolutely.
Dr. Ruffo, did I hear you correctly in saying that you didn't feel we needed anything in the budget for that? Because you, you have that somewhere else earmarked some other place.
Right, we didn't feel that we needed to add additional funds because we will be doing some of our professional development in the spring out of Ready to Learn funds, which would free up money elsewhere. So while it's not reflected in the presentation in terms of, I didn't call it out, social, emotional learning, we did have that conversation after we met last. And we feel that we have the money in the budget to do it without adding anything else.
Beyond professional development, because we know that's, you know, six days out of the year. I mean, essentially, just kind of to echo Mr. Fosco and just making sure that the social, emotional learning piece, that we even look beyond that, a more systemic program that really comes into our full-day kindergarten. I, I've seen that and really liked what that looks like. And even having some, having some of our kindergarten teachers as part of maybe the curriculum, looking at the curriculum. I think we, what we know is that we have a really good core academic curriculum. So you don't have to explore that as much. But this is an opportunity for us to really explore the social, emotional learning piece and for it to really make a difference. So I think just to really focus on that, I think we want to hear more about that at ECP, what the options are out there that you're exploring and what you're seeing.
Sure.
Question on the, you mentioned the reading level and that you want them all proficient by third grade or whatever. Doesn't the, doesn't the data suggest that kids come in at different levels? But after a point, and I thought it was third grade, it kind of levels out? And whether you had preschool or not, you're reading at, they're all reading at the same level?
No, I think what the research is saying is that when you look at certain studies, it's saying that when kids reach third grade, you can't tell the difference if a student had full day or if they had half-day.
Okay.
So that's really what the research is saying. And my recommendation always has been that if you have a student who's had full-day kindergarten going into first grade, teachers really need to start teaching that child where they are, not considering you're going to start right here as a first grader. So if I'm a higher-level student going into first grade, then I need to be pushed and accelerated and stretched because I have those skills to do so. But what seems to happen and what the research indicates is that teachers just start, okay, you're all first graders, we're all going to start here, regardless of where you are. So it's really that.
That's what the, the thrust of the effect is because the teachers are not teaching them where they are and taking them farther. They're saying, we're in first grade, we go here.
Right, that's what, yeah.
No comment. The other question is boundary realignments. I think we should look at full-district realignment, not just two schools. Because every time we do a piecemeal, we go over to the next boundary and we got to do that one. And then we got to do that one. And then we got to just start at the beginning and do the whole thing. I'm sure Dr. Venema, if he's not doing anything, we come back and do it. He loved it. That's all.
Did we look at that and see whether that was necessary? Like, was that an issue explored?
I'm sorry, Ed, I didn't hear you.
Was that issue explored as to whether, the scope of what kind of redistricting we needed to do?
Well, I think the issue wasn't explored. I think it should be something that we should talk about if we feel that we need to do. We know that we have schools that can take more classrooms and can take more kids. So I think we just need to look at the big picture. But I think what we've been doing the last couple of years is we've been just looking at a school at a time when they come and a little bump in the road and then doing those shifts in those boundary realignments. So I, I mean, that's really a board decision if that would really benefit our project here of what we're working on and really look at the full scope of that work. So that we really would be balancing out all of our schools. So, you know, I keep saying we have a NASH, you know, that's three-hundred-and-twenty-three kids. At one time, ten, fifteen years ago, that had a capacity of six-fifty. You know, so you have smaller schools and then you have schools that still keep, you know, NAP just keeps growing and growing. I did, a couple of years ago, I did a boundary realignment. And we, we took some, some neighborhoods and we moved them to Montgomery. And that was over a hundred and twenty kids and they still keep growing. So I, I think it's something to explore, but I think that's more of a conversation at the board, board level. But we do keep, you know, chipping away.
Right.
I just recall when we did the IU study, I guess it's been, has it been two years now?
Yeah.
Almost two years? I mean, one of the reasons we did that was to kind of help inform.
Right.
If we do a district-wide realignment, what are we looking at? What pockets of the district are growing? What's the trend for the next several years? So we have that data now. It, it seems like a wise time to act on it, but.
Yeah, you know what, to echo that a little bit, I would say that I remember a few years ago as an Inglewood parent and we were discussing a move to NASH, that we were incorporating Wald Farm. We were incorporating Gwynn Square. And now it's a few years later and we're not, which just kind of emphasizes the point that it is very fluid, that right now we're looking at it and we're saying, okay, Inglewood doesn't have any room. But in two years from now, are we going to be moving more kids around? I, I think I would be very much ready to listen to a larger conversation about boundary realignment.
If you get everybody in the ideal place, it seems then you shouldn't have to do a piecemeal fix for several years. So it at least gives your current families that are in the system some kind of reassurance that, okay, for the time that my kids are in school, at least for the next several years, these are likely to be the lines. I've heard in the past, some folks that live near those borders, there's kind of that question every year, are we going to move? Are we not going to move? What school are we going to be in? Because they know they're right on that boundary.
Any other questions or comments?
For, it seems to, I, I, I would like to know a little bit about what, how, what is the commitment when you are looking at a full redistricting in terms of time and resources? And I don't, I don't think I understand the process very well. And then it also seems too, because things are so fluid, when you invest that much in a, in that large scale of a project, how, how long is it really valid because things aren't moving? So it seems like you could have, like, if NAP is going to keep growing, well, maybe that growth is finite. And, you know, like, how do you, like, there's, there seems to be, the demographic shifts in the movement in the area just seems to be so fluid all of the time. Will we do a full redistricting and then, how long will it last? Like, so is, is a, is a five-year redistricting and not having to make some changes, is that a win? Or is it more like a two-year? I, I don't.
Can anybody maybe speak to that historically? It's been a long time since you've done a full redistrict. But how long did that sort of rectify? Does anybody know?
And isn't there a census done every year? Or periodically, there's a census that's performed?
You can typically use census information to kind of give you, which I'm, Kurt was probably going to speak to that.
Right. So the last one we did on a full-scale basis was two thousand and five. And that was significant. And we did have a, I understand, a large number of parents who came out and, you know, raised objections and concerns about it. But the board did eventually then do the full-scale redistrict in two thousand and five. Since that time, we have moved boundaries at various schools. Culp was one that we moved some boundaries and had an impact on, on Hatfield. It had some impact on Oak Park. We also moved some boundaries for NAP. It had some impact on Montgomery. We also moved some boundaries a number of times with York Avenue. It had some impact on Gwynnor. We eventually then had some students that went to North Wales because of some, kind of a flexible boundary system we used at Inglewood. We had some students that moved some different places. But we haven't done a large-scale, full-blown redistrict since two thousand and five.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, just leaned over to clarify. So just so we don't end up talking about two things at once. We do not need to redistrict though, because we, that's why we did the feasibility study in order to look at full-day kindergarten. So they are, while we can look at that as something to ease the, the, the number of students in particular buildings, we do not need that in order to look at full-day kindergarten. It's just clarifying, Dr. Ruffo, and.
Right.
Except in the case of Inglewood, right?
Inglewood. Inglewood's.
Angle one, ceiling one, where we, where we're looking at that as an option, that we have to shift.
If we did a larger scale one, it could then save the modular costs.
Right, at NAP.
At NAP.
Correct.
So there could be cost savings on that end.
Or you work that into the renovations.
I was going to say, if we're doing renovations, will we not need modulators anyway? Isn't it likely we would need modulators for the renovations?
Without redistricting, we would.
Without redistricting, we would probably add permanent classrooms to replace those modulars.
Right, so there'd be initially modulars there, depending if that, and we'll hear the architect's report, you know, in the near future, but there'll be options presented. So you can do a portion of NAP at a time in renovations, and relocate to modulars. That's one of the options that I like, you know, we like later here.
Any more questions?
I have some questions about financing it. I don't know if now is a good time for that.
Yeah, great, go ahead. Sure.
Well, we had talked about this as part of the 16 options we looked at for multi-year financial planning, so a lower number was built into those projections, though. I think the number we were looking at last spring was 2.3 million, so we're significantly higher now. So we showed that along with the potential borrowing for some renovation projects, and we looked at what the five-year impact would be on our fund balance. So there's no question, you're adding three, $4 million to your budget, that's going to have an impact. And we have a structural imbalance right now, so ultimately, it's going to continue to come from fund balance.
Which is not a good thing.
Not a good thing.
And, and the, the, the borrowing that we will also need to do at the same time for the high school, if we're going to do that, and I assume we're going to, because I know we need to, need to do for a few years, right? The, the, the cost to do that, and the, and the cost of borrowing to do them, will really squeeze everybody.
I think the one scenario, I just pulled up the scenarios, the one scenario we looked at last year was full-day kindergarten, and a 15-year borrowing, and a 3.4% tax increase in 18, 19. So that 15-year borrowing, that was based on $125 million, that has yet to be decided, that's for future discussion. But if you go with that assumption, that basically takes our fund balance from its current level of around $40 million, down to $15 million at the end of five years. And that was at the $2.1 million figure for full-day kindergarten, not the, the $4 million, $3.8 million figure. So, again, this is all based on assumptions, based on what we know now, but if those assumptions hold to be true, it would take our fund balance from roughly $40 million down to $15 million in about five years, and possibly even less now, with the revised figures, even though they are worst-case scenario figures.
And that lowering impacts our interest rate and bond rating potentially.
Correct, yes. We spoke at the last finance meeting, we had a presentation on bond financing, and we talked quite a bit about what the bond rating is derived from, and there's no question that the number-one factor is the fund balance. And I mentioned that our fund balance right now is at a really good level, sweet spot, so to speak. Just right, it's not too hot, it's not too cold, it's just right where it's at. Dropping it from 40 million to 15 million, there's no question in my mind would have an impairment on our current bond rating, which is a AA1, we're only one of 17 districts in the state with a rating that high. If you drop it down with a structural imbalance of, that we're in now, structural imbalance meaning our budgets that we've been passing the past few years have not been balanced, you couple that with the fact of a $25 million reduction in fund balance over a period of time, there's, there's no question that the bond rating will go down. I'm not sure to what level, but there's no question it'll go down. And when your bond rating goes down, your borrowing costs increase.
But it's a great question. I think it's important, and if you do some really quick back-of-the-envelope type of rough math on this, we know what the Act One index is for this coming year. Mr. Skrocky, what is that number?
The upcoming index for the 1920 year has not been finalized yet, but the projections are 2.3%.
And if you went to a 2.3% increase on the assessed valuation and market value, in other words, if you applied it to assessed valuation, 2.3, what would that yield in terms of increased dollars, Mr. Skrocky?
I think it's around $4 million.
All right. So if you look at about $4 million at the Act One increase, and you have, you know, teacher costs and curriculum materials and some facilities costs, balanced with a bit of a transportation savings in there, 3.2 million, we've said that's on the high side, but you could use up a good portion of the Act One increase due to the new costs from full-day kindergarten. So we need to know that, as we move forward and we look ahead to the budget. We do have some one-time costs in there, I would expect those would come from fund balance. And we do have a substantial amount of money in fund balance, but the big question is, if you're going to use fund balance to pay for recurring costs, that's problematic, and that can be real concerning. So we'd have to be very careful with that.
We did attempt to go and address the structural balance this year, or, you know, to the extent that we could, we'll just continue to work on.
Are you using examples?
Yes.
Steve, if we, because I'm concerned about the bond rating as well, and the level of the fund balance, but I also think there's some other things we can do to, to not have that scenario come to fruition. And I just want to ask publicly again, but the inefficiencies in the transportation department with having our own staff versus a staff that's contracted out, what's your rough estimate as to what we could save annually, if we opted to do what most districts have done in the county now, and gone to an outsourced transportation department?
Taking a look at the difference between our internal cost to operate a bus, one bus per year, compared to what we're paying contractually to our contracted providers, multiplying that by the number of buses, conservatively, you're looking at $2 million a year in savings. That does not count the sale of the fleet, you no longer need to own your fleet, that does not count any savings from insurance, workers' compensation, or possible rental of the bus depot, as an example. But, so conservatively, $2 million a year in savings.
Is that including salaries?
That's primarily from salaries and pension and healthcare, yes.
Excuse me, just to clarify, Mr. Skrocky, the percentage, $4 million out of the projected budget, what percentage is that? For, so, full-day kindergarten would be X percentage of the overall budget?
Oh, we're about $252 million right now, so 2%, less than 2%.
Less than 2%, okay, thank you.
I heard it said before, and I'd like a reminder if that's at all possible, what was the cost of a full-day kindergarten two years ago? When the earlier synopses were put together?
So last year, we had two. Two years ago, when we looked at it, it was about 2.5. So each time I come back to ECP, I would just up the salaries, but not really work up the curriculum as much, because, you know, until I know we were really, I'm going to be honest, getting serious about it, I wasn't going to put that team, putting all that work together, because it took them a long time, really working with vendors, really rolling up their sleeves and getting those amounts. So each time I was presenting, I was presenting it with, we don't have all the curriculum worked up, we don't have all the special ed in, technology, there were some pieces missing. So I really kept, like, the furniture, bare-bones professional, professional development, and also curriculum, but each time, I made sure that I increased the salary with what the current year was, for salary and benefits.
The cost of full-day kindergarten continues to grow as we, as we wait.
As we keep talking about it, because we've been talking about it for three years, three and a half years.
Right. And I'm seeing standards at the state level that have increased, and the assumption that students are being given a lot of these services to begin with. I would hate for a missed opportunity here in North Penn to continue after such a long time without addressing the issue. Thank you for the clarification.
Great, and again, I would like to emphasize that this is high estimate, right?
Right.
And almost a million of it is one-time costs, right? So, what we might save on bus transportation, it would really be, you know, we're going to save a million almost with the one-time cost. Right, because you're only going to have that one year, so it's really 3 million, not 4 million. And that's high.
Correct, I agree. I agree with that. I think, I think, I think, I think the majority of your 3 million, though, I mean, I think we have to, we have to operate, you know, in a prudent manner with funds. So what we're hearing, that full-day kindergarten is important, it's important to the, you know, instructional mission of the district, which I agree is the core of what we do, I don't think that we should drain the fund balance to do it. So we're going to have to look as a group as to how to do this, because we're hearing from, you know, the CFO over here, that if we, if we don't find a way to pay for it, we're going to have downgrades in our credit, we're going to have higher costs, and in 10 years, we'll have no fund balance left, and.
We were all very concerned about the fund balance during budgeting.
Correct, but you don't use tax revenue to pay for your ongoing costs. We have to correct our ongoing cost issue.
Which we tried to do.
With existing operations.
And that was also.
You don't, you can't tax your way out of a, of an operational problem. You have to realign your operations.
So the administration and the community do need some direction here, regarding the board's intention for full-day kindergarten, and it involves two things. In my estimation, one is, does the board desire to make a commitment to full-day kindergarten? And then the second piece of that is, under what timeline? Is there a desire to have it in place by 2019, 20? If that is the case, then we need to know that sooner rather than later. If the desire is to shoot for 2020, 21, then we have the benefit of some additional time. But if we're looking at 2019, 20, we really do need to know sooner rather than later, preferably here in September, in my estimation, no later than October. It's just not doable if we don't.
Well, do I have a motion to recommend approval for the placement on the September 20th, 2018 action meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Gee, seconded by Mr. Casa. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Just a clarification, Madam President, in terms of it coming to that vote in September, is there a timeline associated with that? Is that understood, then, that it should be done effective with the 1920 year?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make sure that if, in fact, this motion passes, that we phrase the motion on that meeting accordingly.
Great.
Are we doing any targeted outreach to parents or anything, to, like, what, what public input are we getting? Are we going to do any of that?
I think it's important that we give the public an opportunity to come and comment, at least at the September 20th meeting. I think the standards we have in place right now for public comment before the meeting would be sufficient, because as was spoken so many times, this community's been discussing full-day K for quite a while now.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Great, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I believe it's eight to one, okay.
Susan said that was okay.
Motion.
As long as Susan's all right with it.
Motion carries.
All right. Can I just go back? I want to make sure that Dr. Ruffo was able to comment on the public piece. I do agree with Mr. McBane that the public, like, we have been, this has been on the forefront, but I do think that there are ripple effects within the community, if this change does happen, to, you know, to, to early childhood programs that we want to maintain a good relationship with. Are there plans to do outreach to them?
So we did talk about the survey that will be part of the comprehensive plan, and that we're going to include some questions in that survey about kindergarten. And then I would like to work with Mrs. Liberowski to talk about some other outreach, and what we can do with the communication plan, because I said, as I said last week, I think it's really important that we are very transparent with our community, and just, you know, all of the stakeholders in the community, we really need to let them know what we're thinking, what we're doing, and how it will have an implication on them.
That's great, and I think specifically, once we understand the timeframe and the timeline.
Right.
That's the most, that's the important piece, yeah.
Yeah, and we would bring all this to ECP monthly.
Yes.
So anything that's going on, we would update each month.
Thank you. So, thank you both for the presentation tonight. I know there was a lot of work that went into it, and you guys had to give it repeatedly, so we really appreciate that.
It was very informative, and my vote is not a reflection of the information. I believe it is educationally good for the children, I really do. It's just about the timing and the dollars.
Okay.
And my, my grandchild will benefit in the 1920.
I know.
Year, so.
You said it, not me.
That's the only good part. That is the only good part about the whole thing.
And I will say, I second your comment, that it's educationally sound, and, again, I'm concerned about the dollars, I'm concerned about the impact on the fund balance, but keeping in mind that our primary role is that we have to do what's educationally in the best interest of the district. I think we've had enough evidence that this is in the best interest, and I think we really, as a board, have to commit ourselves to rolling up our sleeves and finding where we can find the dollars to do this, because we can't just not make any offsets, and think that we're going to continue to have the money every year, because we know from the scenarios